I'll now call this meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome everyone who's come out tonight, who's in attendance, and also those that are watching the meeting on our G-10 television. To begin the night, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, but I've got some young folks here in the audience from Boy Scout Troop 879, from the First Presbyterian Church on Johnson Boulevard. They're our troop leaders, James O'Donnell, and they're working on a citizenship badge. So I'm going to ask them if they would come forward, please, and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll give them time to get up here and set up.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll please stay standing for a moment. Mr. Carter, if you'll lead us in the invocation.
Our heavenly Father, as always, we pause at this time to give you thanks. To give you thanks for this beautiful day that we've enjoyed, to give you thanks for the blessings and benefits that you bestow upon us individually and collectively as the citizens of Jacksonville. We mourn this evening for the passing of our and for the life and service of Joe Normandot, a former city council person. We pray for his family during this time of loss. Give thanks this evening for all of our poetry, poster, and essay contestants, and winners especially, for their participation, and we pray for them and their families as they move forward in their young lives. As always, we remember our military, and we pray for them, for their safety, for their anxious families. We always ask your guidance and direction to be with our mayor and with our council. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for coming tonight and helping us with the pledge. Thank you. Members of council, you have a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting, and at this time I'd entertain a motion to adopt.
Send it.
I have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Here, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So next, we're going to do our presentations for the evening, and I'm going to come around front. This time, I'm going to ask Marcia Wright if you'll join me up front. Marcia's a member of the Onslow Commission for Persons with Disabilities, and she will be assisting me in handing out the awards tonight. Thank you, Marcia.
Glad to be here.
The Onslow Commission for Persons with Disabilities and the City of Jacksonville sponsored their annual poster, poetry, and essay contest to help promote Disabilities Awareness Week. The theme for the contest this year was "Let's Change Attitudes." We had 48 entries. Our judging panel selected a winner from each participating grade, and the winning students will receive, each receive, an award certificate and a $50 gift card. Also, a teacher from a participating elementary and middle school was selected to receive an Excellence in Participation Teacher Award based on student entries that most clearly stated related to the theme. The Teacher Award consists of an award certificate, a $50 gift card, and a $60 in pizza gift cards for the teacher's class to have a pizza party. That sounds pretty good. The winning entries are on display in the lobby out here at City Hall, and they'll be there through Friday, May 19th. So please make sure you take a look at all the fine artwork on your way out tonight. Without any further ado, we're going to announce the winners. I'm going to announce them, and as I call your name, if you'll come up, and we will present you with your certificate and your gift card. Megan Doldos, she's our kindergarten participant, and she's from Northwoods Elementary. (applause)
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I'll let your mommy take a picture here. Let's look at her. Sarah Bonher Diaz, first grade at Northwoods Elementary School, and her teacher is Ms. Chaihoen Sabour. And is Sarah here? Do you all have a Sarah? Shawley Carpenter is the second grade winner. Thanks, Shawley. Katie Lynn Regelsberger will be our third grade winner. Katie. Our fourth grade winner, Haley Melvin. (inaudible). Is Haley? I see. 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 Katie Lynn Regelsberger will be our third grade winner. Katie. Our fourth grade winner, Haley Melvin. (inaudible). I see. 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 Now, we have some 2017 Teacher Excellence in Participation Awards. Our elementary school would be Ms. Chi Sarabura from Northwoods Elementary. (applause) Our middle school Teacher Excellence Award is Ms. Andrea Hurst from Dixon Middle School.
And on behalf of the Onslow Commission for Persons with Disabilities, we really want to thank the students and the teachers who participated in this. It's an activity we sponsor to try to get kids involved in the issues of their neighbors and friends and classmates and so on who live with disabilities. And we really want to thank the teachers for taking the time to involve the students in this activity, and we hope to see all of you again next year. Thank you.
All right, my friends here from the Leather and Lace Motorcycle Club, I would like to have you all come on up. Another year has gone by.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. This is a proclamation we're going to do tonight for National Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. The goal of Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month is to encourage all motorists, both vehicular and cyclists, to share the road safely and to make a conscious effort to drive fully engaged and undistracted. And I'm going to read a proclamation for you. Whereas Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month is designed to increase public awareness about motorcycles and to encourage their safe and proper use among motorcycle riders; and whereas North Carolina's climate and scenery makes motorcycle riding an attraction throughout the beautiful state of North Carolina, and riders consider our roadways to be some of the best for riding; and whereas motorcycles are increasingly used as a regular means of transportation, they are an energy-efficient vehicle that reduces fuel consumption, traffic, parking congestion; and whereas the motorcycle is an important form of transportation for commuting, touring, and recreation; and whereas to prevent injuries and deaths on North Carolina's roadways, motorcyclists and motorists must be vigilant in their efforts to share the road and ensure the safety of everyone; and whereas the International Women's Motorcycle Club, Leather and Lace Motorcycle Club, is committed to increasing the safe operation of motorcycles by promoting rider safety education programs, and their goal is to alert the motorists of Onslow County in North Carolina to share the road. Now therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, the mayor of the City of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim the month of May 2017 as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month in the City of Jacksonville, and I ask that all citizens to join Leather and Lace Motorcycle Club in a concerted effort to promote awareness, mutual respect, and safety on our roads. And ladies, again, it's a pleasure to have you back again this year, and thank you so much, and I will present you with this proclamation. (applause) I think she wants to get a picture here.
She got the proclamation. (laughing)
The next proclamation tonight is for Hypertension Awareness Month, and at this time, I would like to ask some of my friends from Onslow Memorial Hospital to join me up front here. I have with me tonight Dr. Penny Burlingame Deal, the Chief Executive Officer of Onslow Memorial Hospital. I have Erin Tallman, who's Senior Vice President, Patient Advocacy Officer, Amy Sousa, the Senior Vice President of Public Relations and Marketing, Susan Taffos, stroke nurse coordinator, and Josephine Malfatano, Director, Performance Improvement and Accreditation. The health of our community is the foundation for a caring and productive society, and the City of Jacksonville is honored to support Onslow Memorial Hospital in their effort to promote education and awareness about hypertension. And at this time, it's my pleasure to read a proclamation that we have prepared just for this purpose tonight. Whereas the health of our citizens is the foundation for a caring and productive society, and our future rests with our ability to treat and ultimately to prevent a variety of illnesses, including high blood pressure; and whereas heart disease and stroke are the second and fourth leading causes of death in North Carolina, and high blood pressure, also known as hypertension, is a modifiable risk factor for heart disease and stroke; and whereas more than two out of every three people who have had a, who have a first heart attack also have high blood pressure, and three out of every four people who have a first stroke also have high blood pressure; and whereas adequate medical treatments and proven preventive health strategies that include a low-salt diet with more fruits and vegetables are beneficial; and whereas education can help with early diagnosis, prevention, and better treatment. Now therefore, I, Sammy Phillips, the mayor of the City of Jacksonville, do hereby proudly proclaim Wednesday, May 17, 2017, as Hypertension Awareness Day in the City of Jacksonville, and I urge all our citizens to recognize the seriousness of this disease and the meritorious work of the public health and healthcare providers in prevention and treatment of the disease. Thank you all so much for coming out tonight. I'm going to present this to you.
(applause) Mayor Phillips asked me if I wanted to say a few words, and I do. He's stolen a lot of my words, but I do want everybody in Onslow County to know, Onslow County is unfortunately one of the highest counties in the state with hypertension, and it is a modifiable risk factor. Onslow Memorial Hospital, in conjunction with the Health Department, participated in the community health needs assessment, and the community also is aware that that is a problem and has asked for assistance in improving their health conditions. As the stroke nurse coordinator, I do see patients in the hospital that have had a stroke, give them some education on modifiable risk factors. I do community screenings, and again, we check blood pressures, and we go ahead and check cholesterol and blood sugars because those are also modifiable risk factors. So Onslow Memorial really just wants to get the word out to the public. There are risk factors that are modifiable with some lifestyle changes, and if anybody has any questions, they certainly can contact me at the hospital, and I can talk to you about different screenings that we can do for the community.
Before you all leave, I want to thank you ladies, on behalf of the city and the city council, for all the wonderful work that you do at our hospital, at Onslow Memorial. I have just had experience out there with my mother, and, you know, she just received the best care she would have, she could have possibly received anywhere, and thank you very much for having that hospital in our community.
Thank you so much. (applause)
Oh, wow. This thing's way down there. You were right. It's too high. I'd like to, now, we have a presentation tonight I'd like to make, and I'd like to have one of our folks here, our senior finance manager, Alan Weeks, and his family, to join me up front. Hey, Alan. The North Carolina Certified Local Government Finance Officers Program is designed to enhance the public finance profession in North Carolina and is sponsored by the North Carolina Government Finance Officers Association. In addition to experience, candidates must take several educational core courses as well as vigorous examinations to deter, to meet the program's standards in becoming a certified local government finance officer. Alan Weeks, our senior finance manager, met the program's standards of experience, education, and examination, and has earned his certified local government finance officer certificate, and I am very honored to be able to present this certificate to you, Alan. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. (applause) That's totally embarrassing. Gail, you and Carol, you're all part of the team. Y'all come up here with a picture, too. (laughing) (inaudible) taking the pictures. Y'all feel free to come up here and get better pictures. Alan gets better looking the closer you are to him. (laughing) (applause) I was going to tell everybody, this is a good time to leave. I guess, I guess y'all got the message, really. You got the word. (laughing) (inaudible). 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 (inaudible) taking the pictures. Y'all feel free to come up here and get better pictures. Alan gets better looking the closer you are to him. (laughing) (applause) 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 I was going to tell everybody, this is a good time to leave. I guess, I guess y'all got the message, really. You got the word. (laughing) (inaudible). 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 Yeah, Michael got rid of his and gave it to Jeremy. Those were, uh, some very nice presentations tonight. We've come now to our first section of public comment for the evening, and I do not have anyone signed up on the sheet, but that doesn't mean you can't speak if you want to. I'm sure we, sometimes we take it up a little bit too soon. Anybody present wishes to speak at public comment? All right, so now we're going to move on.
Did you want to speak?
We may have, we may have a...
I'm sorry, I did not see.
(inaudible).
Oh, we're going to get to you in just a moment, okay? Yes, ma'am. We got you covered. So we have the minutes and the, from the April 18, 2017 workshop meeting and the April 18, 2017 regular meeting, along with our consent items. I think there's a couple on there tonight. Move for adoption of the minutes and the consent agenda?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion here, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? So we're going to go to item number two on the agenda here, MAP Amendment, rezoning from residential multifamily low-density to corridor commercial at 191 Piney Green Road, and Jeremy Smith will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. As you stated, this is a rezoning petition for 191 Piney Green Road. We'll note the vicinity map before you. That shows the general location along Piney Green Road, near the intersection with US-17, North Marine Boulevard, New Bern Highway. This is aerial photography of the site. This property is currently zoned, it is, I'm sorry, it is actually currently zoned RMF LD, as noted by this map. To the south is property owned by the applicant, Mr. Thomas G. and Jennifer L. Collins. Is zoned corridor commercial. Property to the north is Humphrey Heating and Air, also zoned corridor commercial. Property to the northeast is undeveloped property, zoned residential multifamily high-density. And several properties to the south are zoned RMF LD, residential multifamily for and used as single-family dwellings. This is a 3.62 acre parcel of land. The Camelane Use Plan currently designated, designates it as a regional commercial, as it does for all adjacent properties. The map before you shows what this property would look like if it was rezoned to corridor commercial. At its March, or, I'm sorry, excuse me, May 8 meeting, the Planning Advisory Board, along with staff, is recommending approval of this rezoning application, with findings of fact A through J being found in the affirmative, and that the rezoning advances the public interest by creating more development opportunities and making consistent, making it consistent with the future land use map. Mr. John L. Pierce is representing the applicant and may, along with staff, may answer any questions you have.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to recess, regular council meeting, open to public hearing that's required in this matter. Is there anyone present wishes to speak for this rezoning at 191 Piney Green Road? Saying no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Council, you're being asked to consider the rezoning.
Mayor Phillips, I move that we approve the zoning request, findings of fact A through J being found in the affirmative, and that the rezoning advances a public interest by creating development opportunities and making it consistent with our future land use map.
Second.
You have a motion and second. Is there any other discussion here, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to agenda item number three for the evening. This is a public hearing for a MAP Amendment rezoning from residential single-family RSF7 to corridor commercial at 501 Piney Green Road. Jeremy Smith will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. This application is submitted by Larry and Sandra Barker. You'll notice the vicinity map before you. That shows the general location at 501 Piney Green Road. Aerial photography show you what the property looks like. Again, currently, the property is zoned residential single-family seven, that the request is rezoned to corridor commercial. You'll notice that properties to the east and directly across Piney Green Road and to the north are all zoned RSF7, and property across Wolf Swamp Road, the home of April Shallows Forest, is zoned corridor commercial, along with two parcels further north along Wolf Swamp Road. The Camelane Use Plan designates this entire area as low-density residential. If this rezoning was approved, the map before you shows what this property would look like rezoned. At its May 8 meeting, the Planning Advisory Board recommended approval of this requ- At its May 8th meeting, the Planning Advisory Board recommended approval of this request, along with staff, finding that, finding the fact C through J would be found in the affirmative. And if council were to direct staff to update the Camelane Use Plan, that would make it, findings of fact A and B found in the affirmative. One thing that plant, count, staff has found that if we do, if council does direct staff, does approve, and does recommend staff update the Camelane Use Plan, we will also do that for the properties across Wolf Swamp Road at that time. Mr. John L. Pierce is here. He represents the applicant, Larry and Sandra Barker, along with staff, would be happy to answer any questions. I would add that the recommendation, again, just to clearly, finds the fact C through J have been found in the affirmative, and to direct staff to update the Camel plan, which would make the rezoning consistent, and that finding of facts A and B would be then consistent, and that the rezoning would advance the public interest by creating more development opportunities. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
Question. Jeremy, what's the plan in terms of adjacent properties now? If we're designating some of these properties, being that it's, Piney Green is now a pretty significant corridor, will be, how are we gonna address the RSF7s across the street or next door? Remember, we had some conversation about similar-like properties and trying to maybe, or are we gonna have to do these one at a time as they come up? Because obviously, they're all gonna be in the CC...
We do, whenever the applicants come in, we do, we always ask them if, if, you know, get a group of properties to try to bring it in and make it a larger scenario.
I guess my question is, should that, should that land use map be modified along Piney Green Road so that we're not having to deal with this?
That, I mean, that staff may, that may be something that the council wants to direct staff into, looking to update the Piney Green corridor.
Yeah, 'cause I just feel like now, it's sort of outdated, because essentially, you're gonna see a lot more CCs along this. And to add to that, we also have to figure out a way to make sure that we protect the SF community, single-family community, as part of the CC upgrades. You know, through buffers, or whatever's appropriate to, to separate the commercial and the residential. Just something to think about, maybe, instead of, 'cause obviously, everything across the street is gonna be CC, or maybe next door, you're not gonna deny them, because it's gonna be consistent.
What I suggest that you do on that is, after you decide whether you're for or against this rezoning, that you simply direct the staff to do a study of all remaining properties on Piney Green, and determine if the city should initiate its own rezoning action. As you know, the government can initiate rezoning actions, also the private property owner. Rather than having to deal with these one at a time, if this is going to be the trend, I would recommend that the government, meaning the city of Jacksonville, be proactive in looking at those. I would also remind you that a significant amount of the single-family that is located, what I'll call, behind the proposed site, will now be turned over to the county as we transition from our ETJ jurisdiction to their jurisdiction. However, the council's direction to the city staff was that we will retain the jurisdiction over the road frontage.
Answer your question.
That is a good idea.
I would like to add that you mentioned buffers, that if this property was to move forward and be rezoned, any development would trigger the requirement, as long as those properties remained, a residential zoning would trigger a type A buffer, which is a 30-foot vegetated buffer, along with a solid six-foot opaque fence.
Whether the adjacent property is, is in the city ETJ or in the county...
Yes, as long as the county keeps it zoned residential.
Mayor, counsel, I could add one thing. When we look at the corridor, you've got a lot of houses along Piney Green Road, and if we rezon them to corridor commercial, we would, in essence, make a lot of houses non-conforming. So if it's damaged or destroyed, it could create some problems. So that's something we'll have to look at in conjunction with it.
But we will study the corridor for it.
Okay. So, we're gonna go ahead and recess to a regular council meeting, open and public hearing. Is there anyone wishes to speak to this matter, 501 Piney Green Road? Yes, ma'am. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Kimberly Walker. I reside at 102 Knight Place, which is located exactly behind this project, the site that we're speaking of.
I didn't hear from you.
It's been in my family since 76, and it's my grandmother's prior. And I've taken on since she's been deceased for a while now. I'm asking that you deny this request because of, as you drive down Piney Green right now, there are several vacant lots that are listed as commercial. I understand we need to upgrade, you know, trying to grow the city and everything, but we have four gas stations with convenience stores. We have a brand-new one at the corner of 17 there, that's a very nice convenience store and gas station that just opened up. We have food lines, we have everything we need right there, and I can't see a reason to change this particular parcel over to commercial at this time. Like you were saying, there are homes all around this, not only my home. I'm here on behalf as well for Mr. Adam Ackerson, who owns six properties in the cul-de-sac here, as well as the corner that's listed on this map, okay? We have every, there are two auto garages that's available going down Piney Green, in great shape, neat, that's vacant, empty, like I said. There's a gas station store that's vacant and empty, available for someone to take in. Large warehouse building, that's available. Several offices I spotted. There, the old meat market is up for sale right now. It's temporarily a thrift store there. But, like I said, I, you know, there are several other alternatives available, far as making jobs available, where we have plenty of spaces, like I said, that are there right now, rather than changing the zone over at these housing area. All around there, as you see there, residential houses. April Showers is there. It's a low-key place, but we don't know what will come in. And like I said, we've done a lot of changes, as you know, on Piney Green over these last few years and everything. Used to be all trees there. I never forget it growing up, like I said, I lived there for a long time. And now I have the roadside, which is, you know, but this property, I can say, is not even that wide. You're speaking of putting a wall up or anything. It's only an acre point two-five. That's not that big of a piece of land. It's like spot zoning, you know, so. I ask that you please deny this request at this time, you know? I don't, like I said, there's other alternatives available.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Mr. Pierce?
I certainly understand your concerns, but this track, really and truly, with the development of Piney Green Road, is not an ideal location for residential, and I think it affords my client the highest and best use of the property, and I think we comply with all the application requirements. And I certainly think that the residential, if we could, if we develop this into a subdivision, there's no buffering requirements, and if we develop it, if it's rezoned, there's gonna be a mandated 30-foot buffer between the two, which I think is certainly better than cutting up small residential lots, and we could cut up eight lots with more than 1.24 acres. And I certainly think it would be more impact on the highway, and I could imagine a summer of business such as April Flor, April Showers, Florist, and I certainly think that's not impacted the neighborhood. And I, I don't envision this being a high use for the more land that is, with the stringent buffer that we require to install. And I'm here to answer any other questions y'all may have, but I certainly think it affords my client the highest and best use of this property. And I think it would support a betterment in the city of Jacksonville.
Any questions, Mr. Pierce? Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, John Pierce, 405 Johnson Boulevard.
We forgot to do that.
And also 733 Harris Creek Regent, I'm not in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Any other?
I just wondered if...
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Claire Martin, and I own the property adjacent to this site, 523 Piney Green Road. And I was just wondering if they had any plans, you know, if, if it did, if it were approved, if, what the plans were for commercial business there?
I don't think they've got to that point.
They haven't, they haven't got to that point?
Not that we've made, been made aware of, no, ma'am.
Because I was just concerned with the, with the road taking most of the front of my property, and devaluing the home, what it would be like to try to sell if it was right next to some business.
I think, I think that that's what we were talking about earlier.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear a lot of what was being said.
That staff will probably, if it moves forward, that there may be potential for your lot to also be changed to commercial corridor, which would increase the value of your property as well, or potentially could, but that hasn't, that's...
That would be a very positive thing.
It would be a positive thing for you. And if they do build commercial and you stay, there'll be an adequate buffer so that you're not impacted.
So, you would be that buffer.
Either way, you're, you have some protection based on it.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, well, that, I'm gonna close the public hearing in this matter. Counsel, you're being asked to approve the zoning request, rezoning.
I'll make a recommendation, that the recommendation of the staff be accepted, along with the proviso, that the staff be instructed to look at all properties within the city limits along the Piney Green corridor, to see the effects of the road development and whether the zoning should be altered.
What about this?
I said, except the staff recommendation as written.
Second. Alright, we got to have a public hearing in this matter. Pardon?
You did.
I thought we didn't. Oh, this, I'm sorry.
You closed it.
Ah, that's right. We did close it at the last meeting, okay. Alright, so, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here, not all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, we have a special use permit here. This is for type three site plan for a telecommunication tower at 445 Western Boulevard. And this is a new one. So this time, we will recess the regular council meeting, open up public hearing in this matter. Okay, you need to be sworn? Do you swear the information you're about to give us, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth self-help gun?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you.
This is 445... 445 Western. Yes, sir, this is, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a telecommunication tower submitted by Towercom 4 LLC at 445 Western Boulevard. You'll notice the vicinity map before you, showing the general location on Western Boulevard.
Excuse me. Is the sound system on? I'm, I'm having difficulty hearing you, I'm not sure the audience can hear you.
And they're having trouble hearing behind too, so.
And we skipped one. I'm sorry.
Sir?
No.
I don't think it's me.
No, you're not, not coming out over the, over the head, so.
I will try to talk louder.
Alright. Counsel, are y'all ready for the, mending the agenda to reversal or release? Okay.
My bust.
Just so you didn't hear, I will repeat, 445 Western Boulevard. This is a type three site plan, a special use permit application submitted by Towercom 4 LLC for a new telecommunication tower. You'll notice the vicinity map before you, showing the general location along Western Boulevard. This is aerial photography on the screen before you, showing that the project site is currently undeveloped. This property is zoned corridor commercial, and abuts corridor commercial along Western Boulevard and to the north, at the corner of Commerce Road and Western Boulevard. To the west, it abuts an undeveloped tract of land, zoned RMF LD. And to the slight northwest is industrial zone property, also undeveloped. Before you, on the screen is the site plan. This tower is proposed on a 1.06 acre tract of land at 184 feet tall. While not required, through the staff review of the site plan, there will be a red light flashing on the top of this tower to protect our military mission. The New River Air Station was kind enough to look at this site and had no additional comments. At its May 8th meeting, the Planning Advisory Board recommended approval of this type three site plan, a special use permit, along with staff. Representatives from Towercom 4 LLC are in attendance, and with staff will be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding this request for this new tower.
Counsel, any questions? This is a public hearing on this matter, 445 Western Boulevard. Anyone else, president wishes to speak to this matter? Yes, ma'am. Would you please approach the desk? If you will, please state your name and add, well, first off, let's swear to it. You swear the information you're about to give us, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth self-help gun?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and address for the record.
This is Dana Pelizari, here from Rogers Townsend &amp; Thomas, 1221 Main Street, Columbia, South Carolina.
And, ma'am, because we're having trouble with the microphone, if you'll project so the council can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just a couple thing, couple comments on my behalf, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions that you all might have. But first and foremost, we did submit an application as required by the ordinance, and I just wanted to submit my notebook into Evan. Thank you. Just for purposes of clarification, this parcel actually was subdivided recently. There's a new parcel ID number that's associated with the tower parcel, just to put that on the record, is 162037. And I know as part of the requirements, there's a type A buffer that's required. We would respectfully request that, the parcel right now is very heavily wooded. We're not planning on cutting down any vegetation, that doesn't have to be cut down, only to just construct the tower. We would respectfully request that any vegetation that remains be used for meeting the requirement of the type A buffer. And we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
The staff will do that.
The staff will do that administratively as far as the type A buffer issue, that wouldn't be anything additional for counsel.
Yes. The, that, on the site plan itself, it is noted that they will retain the natural vegetation, however, during construction or after, you know, during, as they get close to completion, if field inspections note that they have disturbed it and it no longer meets that intent, we will require them to, you know, comply.
Questions?
Only other comment that I would make is, for the residents, we need to make sure that there is a restriction, that there will not be a flashing white light placed on this tower. You may not realize the difference in the impact that it has on people between the red light and the, and the white light. For the residents and for safety, a red light will work fine. But I will tell you from experience, you do not want to give them any ability to replace the red light or to add a white light, because that white light will have a negative impact, in my opinion, on the neighborhood. So I would recommend you add that to your recommendation.
John, I have a question regarding the buffer. Can I ask that now, or what?
Yes, sir.
Is it, is it common practice to use natural vegetation for type A buffers?
Yes, sir, we, all the time, we refer those mature trees, you know, the trees that range anywhere from 45 to 60 inches with, in diameter, and we definitely want to maintain they are in our ordinance. I believe in some instances...
Allows for that. Okay, thank you. As far as the white light that Dr. Woodruff is referring to, what?
Just, just to add that on, as a condition, mayor, at the end.
At the end.
And I would point out one other thing while I'm talking, that this is the last one that we had in-house, that we would not be associating the Carolina Telecommunications Group with, that we... Group with, that we talked about, and y'all did that, but I just wanted to make that point for you. Thank you.
And we would be happy to comply with lighting requirements.
Okay, thank you. Got that considered.
Very much. Is there anyone else present wishes to speak to this matter? Here, CNNO1, I'm going to close the public hearing on this matter. Counsel, you're being asked to consider a special use permit and site plan.
Make a motion that we approved the special use permit and type three site plan based on findings of fact, A through G being found in, being found in the affirmative, and that, I guess, the, the red light stays a requirement. I saw it was a requirement on there, but that we not allow them to change out to a white light in the future, is that acceptable?
Yes, please.
Go ahead. Can I have a question? Here, not all in favor, signature five, I say an aye. All opposed? All right. Due to my vanity and not wearing my reading glasses, we'll go back to item number four. And this is a public hearing on a special use permit and type three site plan of the City of Jacksonville Recreation and Parks Community Center at 820 Barnes Street. This time, I'll recess the regular council meeting, open the public hearing in this matter. Do you swear that the information you're about to give us, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth, help you got?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. I hope you are familiar with this property at 820 Barnes Street, former fire station number two. You had this property before you a few years ago for the Zing Zom Children's Museum. However, tonight, I'm bringing it back before you as a request from the city of Jacksonville's Recreation and Parks Department to, who is proposing a community center, recreation center, but in our ordinance, recreation center falls under the broad category of community center. You'll notice the vicinity map before you, showing its general location. This is aerial photography of the site. This property is currently zoned RSF seven, and within this district, community centers are a special use and require your approval. Properties immediately budding and those across Barnes Street are all zoned RSF seven. Park and Associates, who prepared the site plan for Zing Zom Museum, has also prepared the site plan for the Recreation and Parks Department. It is bringing forward a lot of those same characteristics that council approved on that, however, they are not creating the circular drive that went around the entire site. They are trying to minimize expenditures and maintaining what they have on site and bringing the site overall as into much landscaping compliant as they can. With your approval, they will not be putting, and the slide is not in here, but when we reviewed the Zing Zom museum site plan, they did not have a perimeter buffer along the backside of the parking, because the parking went all the way up to the property line, and at that time, council approved that, that change. However, they will have their perimeter buffering around the entire site and the street lawn, the street side. At its May 8 meeting, the Planning Advisory Board recommended approval of this request, along with staff, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any questions, Mr. Smith?
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present wishes to speak to this matter? CNNO1, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, you're being asked to consider the special use permit and site plan.
Chair Phillips, I move that we approve the special use permit and type three site plan based on findings of facts, A through G being found in the affirmative.
Motion in second, any other discussion? Here, not all in favor, signature five, I say an aye. All opposed? Motion carries. We'll start with our reports next, and I'm going to start down there with Mr. Robert Ward.
Sir, thank you. Proud to be here.
Mr. Thompson.
I just wanted to mention that I had the opportunity yesterday to attend the dedication of the Dr. Ken and Mary Morgan Dental Clinic at 1 D Witch Street, at the site of their, Dr. Morgan's old practice, which he donated, he and Mary donated to the Onslow Community Outreach, and it was a very nice ceremony. It was, got to see a lot of old folks from back in the neighborhood and everything, and it was really impressive, the, you know, we're really blessed to have the kind of people that are willing to make those kind of donations, and Dr. Jim and Jenny Wilson are going to operate that, or do the work there, the dental work, and volunteer their time, so it's, it was, it was a blessing.
Very nice people.
And Ms. Washington gave a nice set of comments at the presentation.
Ms. Washington?
No comments.
Mr. Willingham?
No report.
Mr. Bittner?
No reports.
Mayor Protem Lizar?
No report, ma'am.
You gotta be kidding me.
I, Mr. Bittner, I actually have a long report, but I'll submit it by email.
The only thing I will say is, yesterday, we also had the Peace Officers Memorial out at Commons. I want to compliment all those that took part in that, it was a very, very nice service. This is Police Memorial Week, but again, I want to compliment our folks and all those other law enforcement agencies, public safety agencies, both federal, state, and local that were there and made it a successful event yesterday. With that, Dr. Wood.
As counsel, this afternoon, the mayor and Ron had the opportunity to represent you in presenting to General Widley a token of our appreciation. He is, of course, transferring and touring out. He will be in Okinawa, and he asks us to extend to you his sincere appreciation for the way that you have made this community a true caring community for the military. He will miss you, but I guarantee you, you will see him again. He is a man who is going to continue to advance. This community has greatly benefited from his leadership, and again, it was our honor to represent you in giving that recognition today. Also, for the public, we're now set for consideration of the adoption of the FY18 budget on June the 6th here in City Council Chambers. Tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock, we will host here at City Hall approximately 900 persons, I'm sorry, approximately 90 persons, Glenn just, Glenn just passed out with 900, approximately 90 persons from the 2nd Maintenance Battalion, who are interested in learning as much as they can about living in the city, about the rules and regulations, so that as they work with the young Marines who are coming into the 2nd Maintenance Battalion, they can give them guidance on the rules and regulations. The various staff members, including police, finance, recreation, every, almost every facet of city government will be, will be reviewed with them tomorrow. Beyond that, mayor and counsel, always thank you for your leadership and what you do for this community.
Just to clarify, the budget will be adopted according to council's instructions at 5 o'clock at your workshop, which is a regular meeting in room A and B, and then other items may follow, but that will be a special vote at that time when it begins, just to clarify that. No report, thank you.
Does anyone have anything else? Does anyone have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?